Okay. Okay, members of council? This meeting is now resumed. City council has completed its closed session. Consideration of the following items: AU 4.1, Management of the City's Long-Term Disability Benefits, Phase 1; CC 10.1, Cities Contract with IBM Canada; CC 10.4, Proposed Settlement of Litigation Related to the Humber River Hospital's Property at 20208 Church Street. City council considered motions giving instructions to city officials on item CC 10.4 regarding the Humber Hospital lands. No other motions were made in closed session. We will not proceed to the public debate on these items. Counselor De Baer-Maker.
Thank you, madam speaker. I just have, on a point of order, a motion to move on CC 10.4 that we stand this matter down until tomorrow. Oh, sorry, it's not a motion? I thought it was a motion.
There is a motion.
Sounded like a motion.
So, we're going to hold this item down till tomorrow for the debate?
Okay.
And we'll probably go back in camera on the item. Thank you. Okay, CC 10.1, Cities Contract with IBM. Counselor Davis.
I will... Are we not... We have it before us, so I'm going to be supporting staff recommendations.
So you moved the staff recommendation?
Well, it's before us, so...
Yes. On favor, carried.
Thank you. One of my better ones, eh?
AU... AU 4.1, Management of the City's Long-Term Disability Benefits? Okay, we'll stand that one down because we have to prepare for a motion, okay? Okay. Counselor, who held that item down? The mayor? Did you want to speak on it? Yes. Okay. Did you want to speak first or last? Okay. Counselor Shiner. Oh, sorry. Counselor Davis, you have questions. Okay, sorry. Counselor Davis, questions?
I just wanted to ask about manual life and the disagreement between manual life and the city over the cost of administering these... Manya life. Manya life. Man, you guys are a pain.
Man. Man for life.
There, you... The report says that as a result of the auditor general's review, there was an additional claim of 1.2 million, I think is the number, that we made of manya life and recovered from them. Is that correct?
Through you, madam speaker. That is correct. The amount is almost 1.9 million.
1.9 million. And this was for what period?
Through you, madam speaker. The time period was between 2000... Since 2003, there was a billing error that occurred, and we picked it up during our audit.
You also make a recommendation about structuring the RFP differently for the next round and building in a number of new ways of improving accountability on the claims. But you also noted that there was a need to structure it in such a way that there wasn't an incentive? So could you please explain what is the alternative way you want to... You think the city should restructure this agreement around LTD?
Thank you. Through you, madam speaker. There are other governments besides the city who are experiencing a problem with growing LTD and a contract that is paid based on the amount of LTD that's paid out.
No, I understand that.
So what we've recommended is the city consider the outcomes they want to incent and consider restructuring the contract so that it reflects those outcomes and...
I'm just asking specifically, what would we change in the way that we... How would we change the way we do that specifically?
Thank you, madam speaker. One of the things we asked the city to consider is a fixed monthly fee.
Okay. A fixed monthly fee regardless of how many claims were... Are being processed?
Yes, that would be for the legal team to comment on further, but what I can say is there are other governments moving to that model for the same reason.
Maybe I can ask staff, maybe Mr. Racini or the city manager or someone. So this way that our RFP is structured with manya life... You got me focused on that. With manya life is a per capita kind of approach, it sounds like, or per claim. There's... And so there is a suggestion from the auditor general that there ought to be a flat rate approach. Have you looked at that and are there other organizations that use that approach?
Through you, madam speaker. So it is... It's not a per capita, it's a percentage on the benefits paid.
Okay.
It was 4.6% in the previous contract. We negotiated down to 3.3%. What the auditor general is suggesting is, can we look at other forms of payment? And so one of the things that we will look at is, can we introduce some type of fixed payment component plus a percentage? Or can we go just on a fixed payment percentage? Because as she points out is, the more claims they process, the longer it goes. There is some kind of incentive there to keep us stringing along.
Aware of the time.
So we are going to look at alternative ways of structuring.
So it seems as though there are difficulties with manya life and the way they've accounted for their claims and that we took three years to negotiate the actual scope of this agreement. Why was that? And what were the problems that made it, first of all, problematic that we weren't getting the information and claims accurately? And secondly, that it took three and a half years to approve it?
Question.
Through you, madam speaker. It's not the scope of the deal because that's specified in the RFP and what was bid back. So that it really wasn't about the scope. There's always legal language that was involved. There is confidentiality provisions that... Which is now really the subject that's being discussed and access to that information. And so, you know, we're going to sit down, and we have sat down with auditor general's office, with manya life, with legal, to try to work out some mutual language that's acceptable to everybody. But it wasn't about the scope per se.
Thank you. Just Counselor Davis, at Audit Committee, we spent hours saying questions on that and we were questioning that. Counselor Matlow and I, Counselor Lee, Counselor Holiday. Okay, Counselor Carroll to speak?
I don't know what that means. I have a motion. Oh, she's just going to get it for circulation? Can it be put on the screen? Oh, okay. Because they're... Right. But, well, there's a public version of it?
Okay, you have a public motion or do...
I have a motion. I have a motion. We have a set of public recommendations before us and we have a set of in-camera recommendations before us. I am moving a motion that in Attachment 1, the confidential attachment, that Recommendation 1 be deleted. And if you... I can't speak to it publicly, but if you have not got your purple paper, I'm holding it right here. Walk over here and see it. I'm suggesting that this is actually not necessary at this time. What I think is that all of the other recommendations, all of the other controls suggested are actually things that we should support, are actually things that we always hope to see from an auditor general because they are about management controls. They are about contract controls when finding a contract carrier to run an LTD for us. They are about how we deal with getting people back to work. What is the attendance management around all of that? What are the accommodations around all of that? And do we have good controls over who is supposed to make those judgment calls within that? All of those are great recommendations. I just happen to think that with respect to the small group of people that would be impacted by Recommendation Number 1, it's a small group of people to which all of you can relate very closely, all of those controls will impact the way LTD is applied to them. And so I think we can delete that recommendation for now, but we should definitely adopt the others, which are fundamentally management controls that we always hope to see when an AG comes to look at a division or particularly one like this where payouts are involved. And so those are my comments, madam speaker. I hope people will take a look at what Recommendation Number 1 is in the confidential attachment.
Thank you. It's... It's... It was just circulated, Counselor Shiner. Counselor Matlow, you have a question?
I have a question, obviously. I'm going to have to, and you know, and I hope my colleagues and the public will excuse the deliberate vagueness of my question simply because I can't speak directly to the confidential attachment or reveal any information on the purple paper. So through you, madam speaker, and I'll struggle to do this. Do you have any concern or have you considered, Counselor Carroll, that if we supported your motion, that we wouldn't be taking a look at something that the auditor general believes is important, that could ultimately save some substantive funds? And all the recommendation does is asks us to review and look rather than take an action on the specific details of what I can't speak of?
Well, the actual... The answer to that is no, I don't have that concern. Auditor generals bring you recommendations. It doesn't mean that I have to accept all of them. And in fact, as I tried to make clear in my remarks, I honestly believe that we're talking about such a relatively small group because it's a group within a group, that in fact, the management controls that are being recommended here will address appreciably any problems that you have. The case being made for this isn't so much about payouts. The case being made is what do you do at a certain other point along the chain? And with all due respect, it has not been made to the point where I'm on board yet. So what I would suggest is that that may be something... That may be an action that we want to take later on down the line. It would be an action you don't have to wait for an AG to do. You could move that motion at some other time. But given that, we are going to get quite a bit of difference to the way this program is managed, the way it costs. We're already realizing a change here in that a certain number of things that's mentioned in the public report, that we've actually realized that there weren't even actually appropriate management controls around how we pay charges invoiced to us by manya life. We're already going to get 1.8 million dollars back from that. So there's a small subset here that the consideration in one might one day net something from, but I firmly believe the management controls and all the other recommendations address that at this time.
I'm... With all due respect, I'm not clear if I understand your answer.
We can talk offline if you want so that I can speak more frankly.
But I see this deliberately...
But I think I'm pretty clear. I'm already impressed that 1.8 million dollars is automatically saved as a result of this recommendation.
Counselor Carroll, I say this deliberately also to share it with the audience of our colleagues because they and you and I are about to vote on this. And I just, you know, I just remind you that the recommendation on purple paper... Purple paper is about looking at a question rather than taking any action before thoughtful review. And I just don't understand what is your specific concern about doing that?
Well, if I can quickly answer that because I know we're running out of time, but I know that culturally, something like that, you can only keep it confidential so long and then it sends a ripple that probably isn't necessary right now, given that there are much bigger ripples about to go through how this program is implemented. In all of the other recommendations that I am anxious to see happen right away, why send the ripple in Recommendation Number 1 needlessly?
Okay, thank you.
To people that don't...
Thank you. Counselor Perks, question to Counselor Carroll.
Thank you. Just quickly, Counselor Carroll, if I understood you correctly... Counselor Carroll?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah? If I understood you correctly, your motion doesn't in any way affect achieving the things that the auditor general described in the public portion of her report. In fact, all of those things will be achieved.
Not one iota. I intend to vote for all of those and all the other confidential recommendations.
Okay. And so I guess, I suppose then what you're doing is saying there's a different method by which that particular item would come to this council normally and it would be more appropriate for it to come through that other method?
Absolutely. I think that would be more appropriately an action taken, you know, that we should take on that responsibility. We don't need to hide behind an AG to do that. I'm just saying not now to that one. We can and should do that through other avenues if we don't get what we're hoping to get from all the other controls recommended in this report. I want to see those happening right now. I want to put off that discussion for another day and I'll be the first to bring it forward myself. It's not necessary right now to create what would be created by moving that one right now.
Thank you.
Counselor Matlow to speak.
So first of all, I want to thank... I want to thank the auditor general for bringing us what we unanimously at the Audit Committee believed was very sound advice. And while there are many items where we decide to bring amendments forward and revise certain recommendations on this, we believe that we were going to take her recommendations complete and full because we believe that it was very thought through. We all shared, along with our chair and all of our members, the auditor general's concerns. And our concerns were ranged everywhere from the amount of accountability or the dearth of accountability that we've seen here, the amount of money that has been delivered without enough validation for the benefits that were being claimed, the process that's used where we have an insurance company that essentially, the more they approve, the more money they make, which just doesn't intuitively seem to be a good system. Excuse me for a moment. I just can't hear because of the conversation.
I was just conferring with the chair and I do apologize.
It's okay. The chair's conferring as well.
The entire committee shared the auditor general's concerns about process and accountability. We should not fear to ask difficult questions. So while I strongly support the chair and Audit Committee's recommendations, supporting the recommendations of the auditor general, I also urge you not to support Counselor Carroll's motion. There is no reason to fear taking a look at if something makes sense or not. Now, we may hear that it makes complete sense, that everything's fine, and then we know. We may hear that things need to be changed, things need to be reviewed. That's healthy. We may discover that there are partners who we need to have respectful and positive conversations with to determine what's working and what's not, and we will do that in the right way, following the rules. But to simply decide not to even take a look at something when we see everything around it not working as well as it should, I don't think is providing good governance. So let's support the auditor general's recommendations provided to you by the Audit Committee as a package. And please, unless you were at the Audit Committee and were there to really participate in a very detailed, very long, and I must say, very thoughtful conversation that was had, then to sort of come up with something right now without being fully informed may not be the best course of action. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lee to speak.
Thank you, madam speaker. And thank you to Counselor Matlow for preceding me and saying what I was going to say, so I'll just repeat it. Thank you very much to the auditor general and her staff for bringing forward all the reports, including this one. And we have review at the committee, and I would recommend that we do not support Counselor Carroll's amendment not to include Confidential 1 recommendation. I would suggest that you vote that down and take the whole recommendation that is recommended by the auditor general's report and forward it to staff for action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Lee. Counselor Campbell.
Madam speaker, a lot of our colleagues are... Madam speaker? A lot of our colleagues are absent. I'd like to stand this down till tomorrow so we can have a more fulsome debate. We just stood down the last item. I'd like to stand this down so we have more members present.
If he wants to move the motion.
It's actually, well, according to...
Yeah, you're asking for it to be held down till tomorrow, for consideration tomorrow.
Then we have to stand on every single item. The rationale is there's not enough people here. Stand down every item. You can't do that.
We can. We can adjourn. We can recess.
Okay, let's... Counselor Holiday to speak? And we'll hold it down to vote tomorrow, but we'll finish the speakers. Counselor Holiday.
Thank you, madam speaker. I actually want to start out by saying thank you to the auditor general. This was excellent work, a fairly thick package to go through, to read, to understand and understand the magnitude of the issue. We talked a lot about it in Audit Committee and we didn't talk about it here today, but I'd like to see this information come forward. There were a number of key issues that were brought up. The first was simply the sharing of information. And what was mentioned in the report is that there is this administrative blockage. There are these consent forms that need to get signed and passed around. And it sounds like information is not flowing from those that are on disability, those that are active participants in the process, the managers and the Human Resource Department. And I looked to some of the recommendations that address those concerns. It's the sharing of the information that is going to lead to better process improvements and better outcomes, both for those that are on long-term disability and to facilitate their process coming back to work. I also noticed in there that there wasn't a tremendous focus, and I think we're starting to understand this, that frontline managers play an extremely important role in facilitating parts of their team to come back after being on long-term disability. It's these managers that recognize an issue beginning to evolve early in the process. They work with employees at the outset because people don't just suddenly go on long-term disability. It's often a case that it evolves. And I'd like to see the frontline managers play a more prominent role. They also have an extremely important role to do to facilitate workers coming back to work. They know their teams. They want to see their workers come back. They are the key to designing processes and designing solutions to modify the work to have somebody come back and rejoin the team. I also want to recognize the magnitude of the issue. We learned in this report that the number of cases is on the rise, and what's amazing is the value of the cases is increasing at a larger rate. And that's scary because this is unsustainable. It's not just a worry for city management, but it's a worry for taxpayers because we take care of this. We take care of a multi... Over $100 million unfunded liability. I'm sorry, speaker. It's resonating in here.
Can I please have some quiet, please, members of council? Okay.
Thank you, speaker. Any case, we did talk about this at length in Audit Committee. One of the... One of the last things that I wanted to point out in the scary part is the design of the contract. The contract itself gives manya life a percentage of the claims. And I guess that's been the practice all around. But we're the city of Toronto. We're perhaps one of the larger workforces, and many other municipalities look to us for our leadership in how we handle these things. And I think there's a little bit of hope for the future in designing a better contract that doesn't have certain components built into it that would... That would, I'm not going to say incent, but propagate the continuance of these open cases. And I guess the last part is the scary thing about sharing information. We know that there's a second phase to the audit coming, and we understand that this agreement hasn't been signed part and parcel because the terms and conditions haven't been worked out with manya life to facilitate the auditor general getting in there to take a detailed look at the cases. We've only talked about simple administrative issues inside the city. I'm really looking forward to that audit occurring so that I really understand what's happening over at manya life. And I think it's extremely serious that we haven't seen resolution to that agreement. We haven't had an opportunity for our auditor to approach manya life, to look at the books, to understand what's going on. I think that we should treat that seriously. I think the council should recognize that, and I think that we should respond accordingly because the dollar value is so high and this is so important as an organization. Thank you very much, madam speaker.
Thank you. Counselor McMahon.
Thank you. And I said a lot at Audit Committee on this, so I will be very succinct. I will commend our auditor general and her fantastic team, even our outgoing Alan Ash, which I should tell you, Alan Ash is leaving us with his Einstein brain, unfortunately, but we have really enjoyed his time and his savings he's had with the city. So I commend the auditor general and her team on the great work on this. It's quite complicated. It's quite disappointing. We have great employees at the city of Toronto. And I mean, who wouldn't want to work here? Who would not want to work with us? Really? That's a huge incentive. But we do... It's concerning when we do have so many people on long-term disability and why they are on long-term disability and how they got there and what are we not doing to support them to not be on it? And so we got to look at that, and that's part of the report. But I would say that I am not supporting Counselor Carroll's motion to delete one of the recommendations. I think as we voted solidly unanimously for all the recommendations at Audit Committee, we need to do that here as well. They've done a great job and they're solid recommendations. And I will also give a shout out to Toronto Police Services and especially TDC. TDC never... Well, they rarely get compliments. And here's the compliment, that they have fewer employees on LTD and they have a higher return to work rate. So kudos to TDC especially. We need to learn from them how to get that here at the city. So voting for it all solidly as we did in Audit Committee. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
The last speaker is Mayor Torrey.
Well, thank you, madam speaker. And first of all, I want to begin by joining many others who thanked the auditor for what is an excellent... Well, it's an excellent report. It's one that's, again, painful to read. And I want to address myself to that because I think it is, in the end, you know, and I should say, I mean, I have... I've been a manager in business and this kind of thing is not germane just to government. This file, the long-term disability file, is one of the most difficult that managers ever have to deal with because it requires obviously a substantial amount of compassion for people who are, you know, suffering from one kind of an illness. And it's not just an illness, it's a long-term illness or disability of one kind or another. an illness, it's a long-term illness or disability of one kind or another. But it also requires, because it involves, especially in big organizations, such a huge amount of money, an incredible amount of management. And I wanted to just address myself to, to what I think here is the real lesson from this, which is that this was a, I'll use the word, I think, a spectacular failure of management. And I use the word spectacular failure of management because of the data that the Auditor General has provided us with, from within our own sphere of operation. So she's supplied us in the report with the data from the TTC and the police service. And she has shown in the report that both of those organizations have substantially different numbers than we have, and are doing substantially better. And I want to just mention a couple of those. But in talking about management, I think it goes all the way through, and I think the problems here that are alluded to are all the way through management that makes the workplace one that minimizes the causes of mental and physical disability through injury and so on, management which works hard to minimize the number of people who end up going on long-term disability, because that's a big decision to actually go on in some cases, management which carefully, skillfully, but with determination, real determination pursues in a compassionate way, return to work options, return to work options. Because I come from the school, from my own experience, where I've dealt with all kinds of people, quite personally, in a law firm, for example, where I was managing that business. They desperately want to come back to work in most cases, because most people are not happy being at home, and especially being at home because of some kind of an illness. But they have to be offered opportunities in a certain way, in a certain staged kind of way. So there's a real art form to that, that is part of compassionate and competent management. And then there's the one I'll spend no time on, which is management that sweats the small stuff. And I think in this case, we can see that, for one reason or another, a combination of management, and by that, I think we have to refer here both to Manulife, who we hired to do something for us, and city employees, who didn't sweat the small stuff, at least not adequately. They didn't even sign the contract. You know, I say around this building, as I did at Queen's Park, if we can't get the elevators working, then it's no wonder that we have trouble running other parts of the government. And it's the same, if you don't even sign the contract, how can you, you know, how can you expect that you're going to administer it properly, you and/or Manulife? Because both sides didn't sign it. They didn't insist it was signed, nor did we, and it didn't get signed. The same with the $1.9 million in overpayment of their fees. I mean, was nobody going to discover that until our Auditor General came along and did it? But then you have the sort of, what I'll call, not the more serious stuff, because it isn't more serious, the small stuff is important. You have the numbers that don't lie. Active claims per 100 employees in 2015. City of Toronto, 5.5%. Police, 0.8%. TTC, 2.5%. There is nothing in the water or the air of this building that is, that is at the cause of that. I mean, there can be some extenuating circumstances, but it effectively is just not good management of the thing. Return to work, percentage returning to work in 2014. City of Toronto, 4%. Police, 8%. TTC, 18%. These are not fractional numbers that sort of say we're doing a little bit worse than those organizations. We're doing worse by multiples of those organizations. And indeed, in the report, it talks about the fact that between 2010 and 2012, steeper increases in LTD averaging 9% per year. Given the city's aging workforce, a gradual increase in LTD would be expected. However, the pace and magnitude of the recent rises are cause for concern. That was a politic, an understated statement on the part of the Auditor General that is, you know, huge. So I just, I guess I would hope that what can come out of this is not just all these recommendations, but a renewed determination on the part of whatever management is doing this. And if it's us doing it instead of Manulife, or Manulife being replaced by somebody else, or them still doing it, that we, that we set benchmarks and set goals to try and do better at returning people to work. And that isn't lacking in compassion, in fact, it involves more compassion. And do better at the number of people who go on long-term disability. You know, clearly, there was something going on in this building during that period of time that caused that steep increase, and whatever it is, we should try and figure it out. And that's part of management, too. So my message really was just not to sort of speak so much to the particulars of the recommendations, which I think are wise, and I'll support them, but rather to say that I think we have to identify this, and again, be honest for what it is, a failure of management. And we're responsible for that at the end of the day. We hire the people that do this, whether it's Manulife, or our own staff, or both. And I think we have to understand, this is a huge failure, involving millions of dollars we could better put to something else, and have some of these people back at work in a compassionate way, which we want. And so I will support the recommendations, but I just wanted to register that, because I think it's, it's just being honest as to what this is. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
We have a motion by Counsel Carroll. Recorded vote.
Counsel Pritzker, please.
The amendment does not carry. The vote is five to 22.
Okay, on the, on the item, on favor, votes may carry. Counsel Reinsdale, you have a motion to introduce a confirming bill. Counsel Reinsdale?
Yep. Madam Speaker, that Lee be granted to introduce a bill to confirm to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceedings of Council Meeting Number 10 on November 3, 2015.
Shall Lee be granted to introduce this bill? Recorded vote.
Please, Counsel Bylaw, please. Counsel Asher Mary. Counsel Pritzker. Counsel McMahon. Counsel Leighton, please.
Counsel Campbell, please. Counsel Mahavik, please.
The motion to introduce the confirming bill carries unanimously 27 in favor.
Shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw? Recorded vote.
Counsel Pritzker, please. Counsel Georgia. Counsel McMahon.
Counsel Mahavik, please.
Counsel Davis, please.
The motion to enact the confirming bill carries unanimously 27 in favor.
Okay, recess to tomorrow morning at 9:30. Thank you, members of council.